We ask the spectators, the police, keep quiet during the meeting. If you are too loud, it is disrupting to all others. If any attendee is too loud, they will receive one warning. If it happens again, you will be asked to leave. The clerk will now take role.
Waddell?
Here.
Beer?
Here.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beriak?
Yes.
Savet?
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a silent prayer. Thank you. Now, we have... Pastor Nathan Bacon-Corn will please give us the prayer for tonight. Is he here? Is he here?
What is...
Is Reverend Bacon here? Okay, I guess Reverend Bacon isn't here. We'll proceed then. On with the meeting.
I don't think there are. No, there isn't any.
There isn't any.
There's none scheduled, right?
There isn't any.
We have a box of ceremonial resolutions. We should move to the top of the agenda.
Yeah. Which ones do you want to move to the top, please?
All of them.
Well, except for the...
Move up in the agenda. Resolutions 56, 60, 62, 63, and 64.
I'll check on that.
Which ones were those again, Mr. Savet?
56, which is the farmer's market. 60, which is the middle school. 62 is the beautification committee. 63 is for Randy Smith. And 64 is for State Representative Blair.
Okay. Are we going to go... Will you make the motion to go in that order?
Yeah, I made that motion already.
Second?
We already had his second.
Roll call.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beriak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I know that the county engineer and the state rep have some other matters to attend to, so I don't think it's in violation of the spirit of the motion if we begin with the county engineer.
I think we could do that. Can I please have that to read? Thank you very much.
You want to have him step up to the dais?
Yeah, please step up to Mr. Smith.
Right here, Randy.
You have to go the other side. It's an obstacle course. You don't get the resolution unless you can do this.
"The resolution of appreciation to Randy Smith, Trumbull County Engineer, for his cooperation and assistance to the city of Newton Falls. Whereas Randy Smith went above and beyond the call of duty and marshaling resources to repair this intersection, personally enduring the blustery wind and winds to ensure completion of this project. Whereas this intersection is a concrete area of State Route 534 and West Broad Street was not included in the state project to repave State Route 534 but was in fact repaired because of the effort and ingenuity of Randy Smith, our county engineer. Therefore, the council for the city of Newton Falls, state of Ohio hereby resolves. Section 1. Newton Falls City Council on behalf of the city of Newton Falls with this resolution expresses their sincere appreciation to Randy Smith and the Trumbull County Engineers' Office for their assistance and expertise in fixing the intersection on broad and ridge roads in the city of Newton Falls." Pass this day on. I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we accept this. Roll call? Oh, discussion, I'm sorry, discussion.
I just, as first ward, councilman, I want to thank Randy personally for all of his work, all the work his workers did in getting that section completed. It was greatly appreciated, and I know all of our residents, especially on outside town, appreciate that. Thank you.
It was really interesting, actually, going over and talking to the guys and learning a little bit of history about the concrete, the age of the concrete. They did a real nice job, and they were really good to talk with, and they did a nice job there.
Thank you.
I'd like to be heard on this matter, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of council, the county engineer basically saved the day. As all of you may know, that State Route 534 was projected for completion unbeknownst to us without the inclusion of the intersection due to a little-known state policy. And we're going to be talking to State Representative Gil Blair in just a moment about his role, but the county engineer, Randy Smith, took it upon himself to essentially create a solution. And there was a lot of doubt in this town, and when the little snowflakes started appearing sometime towards the end of October, beginning of November, people thought it was never going to happen. And he found a contractor that was not only able to do the work, but it talks about going out in the blustery wind. He was out there himself to do the original inspection, and then to do the re-inspection, and to make the final determination of the actual blocks of cement that had to be removed to change this intersection from something like the surface of the moon to something much more smooth and accommodating. All the folks over in your ward, Eagle Point, and maybe just as important, anyone that's a patron of the Rite Aid, which is the only place where you can get pharmaceuticals in Newton Falls, they should say thank you to Randy Smith every single time they go to get that prescription filled, because he personally intervened to make it happen. And on top of that, the contribution that the county made as a result included things like taking care of traffic control and bringing in the removal of the gigantic cement blocks that had been there for 50 years in the very bad areas. And we thought it would take, well, maybe 10 to 14 days. The entire project, I think, was done in total of five days. So how many times do you get to hear government cooperation under budget and before the calendar date? Doesn't happen very often, unless Randy Smith, our county engineer, is involved. So our citizens owe you a great debt. Thank you.
No, thank you, and I truly appreciate the kind words. Dave was lighting my phone up on a regular basis to be sure that we would be here and we would be assisting with this project. And I think it is truly a good day when communities come together, entities come together, you know, for the betterment of the county as a whole. And I know this project has had a positive impact, and a little more work to do out there, but all in all, it was a good project. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Alberini?
Terry Lovebeard.
We wanted to say something.
Randy, it's always good to get good press, isn't it?
Never hurts.
Never hurts.
Roll call, please.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beriak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes. Beer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Alberini, would you like to come over, please?
Yeah. Sorry. Let's crowd in here. Come on in. I like the three.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Would State Representative Gil Blair please step to the podium, lectern? "Resolution of appreciation to State Representative Gil Blair, 63rd District, for his assistance to the city of Newton Falls. Whereas State Representative Gil Blair assisted the city of Newton Falls and supported the efforts to fix the concrete intersection of 534. Whereas this intersection is a concrete area of State Route 534 and West Broad Street and was not included in the state project to repave State Route 534 but was in fact repaired because of the effort and assistance of our state representative Gil Blair. Therefore, the council for the city of Newton Falls, state of Ohio hereby resolve. Section 1. Newton Falls City Council on behalf of the city of Newton Falls with this resolution expresses their sincere appreciation to State Representative Gil Blair for his assistance and support in the efforts to fix the intersection on broad ridge roads in the city of Newton Falls. Timing was of assessance in the fixing this area of roadway and State Representative Gil Blair helped the city by assisting us in reaching out to the necessary experts to make sure the project was completed in a timely manner." Put a motion on the floor to accept this?
So moved.
Discussion?
Yeah. Again, from residents of Ward 1, I wanted to thank you and Randy Smith again for all your work on this project and making it come to fruition.
Mr. Representative, since you were appointed to your position, and I'm going to say that one more time, since you were appointed to your position, you were... You've done a lot for the city of Newton Falls. You've participated in discussions in Columbus with this, on the CSX rail that we want to keep. You've been to Newton Falls a number of times to work with us. And a lot of that that you're doing isn't really seen by the public, but it's important to us. And your assistance and your help and coming to the meetings and the meetings that we go to and being at the meetings and talking with us is extremely important. But this is something the public sees, and this is something that was extremely important to the public. We didn't really realize the state wasn't going to do this, although it was in the contract, but in that little fine print that we didn't read over. But this is something the public saw and was unhappy with, and we really appreciate you stepping up and working with Randy Smith and with everybody to do this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Blair, I'd just like to say, we've been... Well, I haven't gotten that many calls from people over the years, but about this intersection, I had a lot of people call, and people at work that live here in town come up and talk to me. And it was very important to the city, and we want to thank you and everyone involved for making it happen.
The one thing I have to stress is, you know, I want to thank Dave and all the city officials that I worked with. Everybody was very, very responsive, including the Ohio Department of Transportation. When I reached out to them, they came, and then also the county engineer. I know they got involved with the technical end of this and actually putting it together. I'm happy that I could help and look forward to working with Newton Falls in the future. And I've enjoyed coming out and working with everybody in the city government and hope we can continue to do that and bring some good things to the Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, State Representative Blair, relatively recently appointed, instead of just coasting in his position, has practically made Newton Falls his second home. I mean, he was there at the tree lighting ceremony, the former mayor talked about the CSX meetings, and the fact is that reaching into these upper levels of government, you sometimes think, how does a community, not a major municipality in terms of population, get the attention and help of people that are at the centers of power? Gil Blair is at the center of power and comes into Newton Falls on a regular basis to help us. This is just a small example of it. And the state of Ohio is now working with their planning department how to have other elements of that intersection completed. I think one of the reasons for that is because they know Gil Blair is keeping an eye on it, so you've been a great help to us.
Thank you for the kind words. Thank you very much.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Beriak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Say one. Wait till everybody comes around. Come on. Let's get in here. Can you get everybody in?
Yep.
Would anybody from the farmer's market, would you please step to the lectern?
Get up here, Danny. Yeah.
"A resolution of appreciation to those members of the community that established Newton Falls Farmer's Market. Whereas the Newton Falls Farmer's Market was established and operated by Vicki Ball, Becky Schultz, Barbara Gordon, and Laura Harfus. And whereas the Farmer's Market was held once a month for four months in the summer and started out small but grew in popularity over the year. Whereas the Farmer's Markets offered farmers and vendors the opportunity to enter the marketplace by selling directly to the public. And whereas Farmer's Markets provide a community with healthy food environments with the abundance of local grown produce helps increase fresh fruit and vegetables consumption and play an important role in expanding healthy food access for citizens. And whereas the economic impact of Farmer's Market was not... Only includes direct benefits to farmers and affiliated businesses, but also benefits the community by stimulating downtown revitalization, enhancing community engagements. And whereas the Newton Falls Farmer Market organizers over the years have provided scholarships to Newton Falls High School, graduating seniors and donations to the Newton Falls Senior Citizens Van Organization. Whereas the organizers Vicki Ball, Becky Schultz, Barbara Gordon, and Laura Harfus successfully operated and organized the Farmer's Market for many years through their vision, initiative, dedication, and hard work. Council for the city of Newton Falls, state of Ohio hereby resolve. City Falls, Newton Falls City Council on behalf of the Newton Falls expresses sincere appreciation and acknowledgement of the commitment of Vicki Ball, Becky Schultz, Barbara Gordon, and Laura Harfus, and commend them for their contribution to the community. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Discussion, please.
Thank you. You started from nothing and brought it up, and it was... I hate to see it go. You turned it into a nice project, and you did a lot of work on it. I know what it takes to do that work, but working with the Ford July community did a nice job.
Thanks. We actually have inquiries. We've had four, five ladies contact us, and we're going to meet with them in January. And if they're so inclined, maybe it won't die, so we're hopeful.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say to both of you and all of the people involved, thank you very much. I know it's hard to find somebody to volunteer. It's just a big responsibility for someone to take on, but I'm glad to hear that you have some people that are interested, and I'd like to say again, thank you.
I'd like to weigh in on this a little bit. What I thought was very, very heartening was that it brought people into Newton Falls to show off our city. And the people enjoyed it. There weren't any... I never heard a bad word go on down there. And it got bigger and bigger, and the scholarships themselves were just a credit to you ladies for the children. That's what I'd like to say. I'd like to thank you personally. Would you like to weigh on this?
We're excited about people making efforts to make the community a better place, and I hope that your January efforts are ones that pay off as well. Please call my office if I can assist.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beriak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beriak?
Yes.
Would you ladies like to step over, and we'll get a nice picture of you?
I just take backups. And I'll give... Did he take two of them with him?
Who's next?
Let's give it out to...
The school.
The school's there.
Does anybody have any water?
I do not.
Andy, could you get me some water? Is there any water in there?
Ask John at Kathy's.
Do they have any water at all? My throat is very dry. Thank you very much. Excuse me, please. The next one we'll have is for the school. Excuse me.
Yes, she's here.
Ms. Franklin? Yes.
This is Lori Witt.
Lori Rent, yes.
Witt. Witt. Witt.
Spell it.
W.I.T.T.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hey, Lori.
Hi.
Excuse me, I have a little bit dry from all the reading. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution commending the Newton Falls Middle School for receiving the Momentum Award. Whereas the State Board of Education, State Superintendent of Public Instruction recognized 63 districts, 436 schools, and 12 career technical planning districts for achieving high performance, outstanding progress, and momentum for students across Ohio. Whereas in addition, 48 districts and 173 schools have secured the State Board's Momentum Award for exceeding expectations in student growth for the year. Whereas Newton Falls Middle School was recognized as receiving the Momentum Award. Whereas the Momentum Award is presented by the Board, by the State Board of Education and recognizes schools for exceeding expectations in student growth for the year. Schools must earn straight A's on all value-added measures on the report card. The school or district must have at least two value-added subgroups of students, which includes gifted, lowest 20 percent in achievement, and students with disabilities. Council for the city of Newton Falls, state of Ohio hereby ordains. Newton Falls City Council would like to recognize and commend the middle school for achieving the Momentum Award from the state of Ohio State Board of Education and acknowledge the value of education for continued growth and prosperity in our community. Do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Resolution? Discussion?
Yes. I think the two most important positions in the world are a housewife, a mom, and a teacher. You make the most impact on our kids at that age. And I can remember back in the day when I went to school, some of the teachers in my elementary school who made, in junior high, who made the most impact on my life. And without those teachers, with their paddles and stuff... But without those teachers, you know, sometimes we wouldn't be where we would be in life. So I commend you.
Thank you.
It is important. Everybody talks about, you know, the schools and the city, and the city and the schools, and the city's only goes to schools, and the schools only goes to the city. And it's important that we have that relationship, and it's important that we have good teachers and good programs. And this is a perfect example of what can happen in the schools. Thank you very much.
Just one salient point that was read, and that is that in order to win the award, you must get straight A's on the state report card for value-added categories. Your school did that. And people that sort of miss all the great things happening in the schools ought to see that this matter is highlighted. Congratulations.
Yeah, I truly feel like what I need here is my whole team behind me from kindergarten. Oh, this is only designated this year for the middle school. It really takes from kindergarten all the way up through fifth grade to be able to make such great achievement in such a short amount of time. And just an update, like our third graders, we had our fall OST testing, our air testing, and we've already had 49 percent of our students in third grade already pass the air test. So that is tremendous. That's up from 14 percent. Last year was 35 percent in the fall, and now we're at the 49 percent already this year. So I truly feel like I need all my teachers here with me tonight because they are really the ones in the field and doing all the hard work. So I'm just blessed to be able to serve here in Newton Falls, and every day is just a blessing to serve. So thank you for recognizing us tonight.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Beriak?
Yes.
Savet?
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 Yes.
Alberini?
Section one, Newton Falls City Council, with this resolution, thanks Sherri Harrah and the Newton Falls Flower Beautification Committee for their dedication to the beautification of Newton Falls. And then, section two, the city of, the Newton Falls City Council shall call upon all of the citizens who are committed to show their appreciation and gratitude to Sherri Harrah and the Flower Beautification Committee by acknowledging their commitment and dedication to the city of Newton Falls. And I'd like to open this up for a...
So move.
Second.
Put this on the floor first. We didn't have a first and a second. Now, I'd like to open up for discussion.
I love flowers. I just, I think flowers are just so awesome. Kind of reminds me of what heaven's going to be like, but anytime you want to come to my house or work on my flower beds, I need all the help I can get.
Did you get them?
Brian knows, he's been there.
Did you get them to take over the project in the park?
I'd love to have them do that. Flowers and fountains in the park.
Where's that going to be?
Hopefully soon.
It's beautiful. You guys do a great job with the flowers.
Thank you.
I keep, I keep hanging them up at the house, they keep dying, I don't know what to do with them, but, uh, if you could give you a head on that thing. Beautiful, thank you.
I'd like to say that, that does add a lot of brightness and beauty to the village. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's on your dedication to that, they're very nice all year round. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Lynch, to be recognized?
Uh, well, the fact is that, you know, St. Paul said, praise all things good, pure, and beautiful. Beauty is a reward in itself, and, uh, what we see around this community, uh, is the work of your hands. And I think sometimes we just take it for granted, but, you know, it's like, uh, watching a beautiful sunset or seeing something amazing in the forest of nature, and then your handiwork brings a lot of sunshine to all of us. Thank you.
Now, you're, it's Sherri Harrah.
Harrah, yeah.
Okay, Harrah, got you, okay.
And that's something that my mom, Judy Babiac, started many years ago, and when she passed, um, I carried it on and have some friends helping me. And really, it's Scott Nussel does everything, all the ordering, we do the planning, and I thank you for the moms that were ordered, that was great, because we made that call that they were dying, and, um, and the city department for maintaining everything. And next year, our focus will be on the bridge, since the bridge has been, um, the new bridge. The, um, swags that we had don't fit that one anymore, and, um, the pots that go in the planters, they've seen their last day, so we'll work on something for, um, the, the bridge pots for next year. So, thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you do.
Well, roll call, please. If there's no more further discussion, could we please have roll call?
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Soriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Soriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Go to the wall.
See what you started.
Next one, who comes first?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Scotty's looking at this.
Yeah, I did some different colors, some different things.
Structures and dirt and stuff, cotton.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like, uh, Carl Sanders.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized for a moment?
Yes.
Um, that completed the ceremony resolutions that you brought to the forefront, but there's, um, also one today that because of the timing, you understand in a moment, uh, I'd like you to bring forward now, which is the one for, uh, Councilman Alberini and U.S. Safety Gear.
We have the mayor and, uh, and Mr. Beer to recognize, uh, to do too, don't we?
You do, but I didn't know if you're going to take them out of order. I want to take Mr. Alberini's right now, if we could. Is that all right?
All right. Where's, where's it at?
We'll make the motion to move Resolution number 58-2019. Congratulations to Terry Alberini, U.S. Safety Gear. Can we just move it before special presentation?
Anybody second that?
I second.
All right. A resolution of, well, sorry. Roll call, please.
Alberini?
Abstain.
Soriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Alberini, I'll get the wall, please. This one you can't tuck out. Can't tuck out of this one, Terry. Oh, it took more. She's got a landscape, she's done a good job.
Got it?
You get it? Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, counselors.
Are we going to go with the other two real quick?
It's probably a good idea.
Well, it probably would be a real good idea.
Might as well.
Hit it over with.
It's like doing wind sprites.
Joe, do you want me to make a motion to move those as well?
Yes, please. Yes, we do.
Okay. Make a motion to move Resolutions, sorry, 59 and 61 is all that's left, right?
There's a second?
Second.
50, 61.
Moving 59.
61, man.
59 and 61.
Which one do you vote before we do it?
Oh, yeah.
Which one are we going to do first?
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Abstain. Yes.
Beer?
Abstain.
Alberini?
Yes.
Soriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
A next thing on the agenda for a resolution of appreciation would be Resolution 62-2019. A resolution of appreciation to Sherri Harrah and the Newton Falls Flower Beautification Committee. Whereas the Newton Falls City Council would like to acknowledge and commend Sherri Har- would you please come? I'm sorry. I thought you were...
Come here.
Oh, I didn't, come on.
Oh, sure. She's here.
For her continued dedication and commitment to the Newton Falls Flower Beautification Committee, which provides the city of Newton Falls with beautiful flowers, hanging baskets, and holiday decorations. Whereas the city, the Newton Falls Flower Beautification Committee also takes time to maintain the flowers throughout the city, and in the winter decorate the covered bridge, gazable, and flower pots. And the Newton Falls, whereas the Newton Falls City Council Mayor would like to recognize Sherri and all the members of the committee for their dedication and commitment to the beautification of the city of Newton Falls. Whereas the City Council, Mayor, administrations, city of Newton Falls would like to express their appreciation to Sherri Harrah and everyone who volunteers for the commitment, dedication, and service to the city and its citizens. Without this group of volunteers, the beautiful flowers and decorations would not be possible. Council for the City of Newton Falls, State of Ohio hereby resolves. Section one, the Newton Falls City Council, with this resolution, thanks Sherri Harrah and the Newton Falls Flower Beautification Committee for their dedication to the beautification of Newton Falls. And then, section two, the city of, the Newton Falls City Council shall call upon all of the citizens who are committed to show their appreciation and gratitude to Sherri Harrah and the Flower Beautification Committee by acknowledging their commitment and dedication to the city of Newton Falls. And I'd like to open this up for a...
So move.
Second.
Put this on the floor first, we didn't have a first and a second. Now, I'd like to open up for discussion.
I love flowers. I just, I think flowers are just so awesome. Kind of reminds me of what heaven's going to be like, but anytime you want to come to my house or work on my flower beds, I need all the help I can get.
Did you get them?
Brian knows, he's been there.
Did you get them to take over the project in the park?
I'd love to have them do that. Flowers and fountains in the park.
Where's that going to be?
Hopefully soon.
It's beautiful. You guys do a great job with the flowers.
Thank you.
I keep, I keep hanging them up at the house, they keep dying, I don't know what to do with them, but, uh, if you could give you a head on that thing. Beautiful, thank you.
I'd like to say that, that it does add a lot of brightness and beauty to the village. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's on your dedication to that, they're very nice all year round. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Lynch, to be recognized?
Uh, well, the fact is that, uh, you know, St. Paul said, uh, praise all things good, pure, and beautiful. Beauty is a reward in itself, and, uh, what we see around this community, uh, is the work of your hands, and I think sometimes we just take it for granted, but, you know, it's like, uh, watching a beautiful sunset or seeing something amazing in the forest of nature, and then your handiwork, uh, brings a lot of sunshine to all of us. Thank you.
Now, you're, it's Sherri Harrah.
Harrah, yeah.
Okay, Harrah, got you, okay.
And that's something that my mom, Judy Babiac, started many years ago, and when she passed, um, I carried it on and have some friends helping me. And really, it's, uh, Scott Nussel does everything, all the ordering, we do the planning, and I thank you for the moms that were ordered, that was great, because we made that call that they were dying, and, um, and the city department for maintaining everything. And next year, our focus will be on the bridge, since the bridge has been, um, the new bridge. The, um, swags that we had don't fit that one anymore, and, um, the pots that go in the planters, they've seen their last day, so we'll work on something for, um, the, the bridge pots for next year. So, thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you do.
Well, roll call, please. If there's no more further discussion, could we please have roll call?
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Soriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Alberini, I'll get the wall, please.
This one you can't tuck out.
Yeah, that's what he has to do.
Can't tuck out of this one, Terry. Oh, it took more. She's got a landscape, she's done a good job.
Got it?
You get it? Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, counselors.
Are we going to go with the other two real quick?
It's probably a good idea.
Well, it probably would be a real good idea.
Might as well.
Hit it over with.
It's like doing wind sprites.
Joe, do you want me to make a motion to move those as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Make a motion to move Resolutions, sorry, 59 and 61 is all that's left, right?
There's a second?
Second.
50, 61.
Moving 59.
61, man.
59 and 61.
Which one do you vote before we do it?
Oh, yeah.
Which one are we going to do first?
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Abstain. Yes.
Beer?
Abstain.
Alberini?
Yes.
Soriac?
Yes.
Soriac?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution congratulating Mr. Councilman Lyle Waddell for being elected second vice president of the Ohio Municipal League. Whereas the Ohio Municipal League was incorporated as an Ohio nonprofit corporation in 1952 by the city and village officials who saw the need for a statewide organization to serve the interests of Ohio municipal government. And whereas the Ohio Municipal League is governed by a board of trustees elected to the membership, the board is a policymaking body and appoints an executive director to manage the league under the general direction, and whereas the OML represents the collective interests of this Ohio cities and villages before the Ohio General Assembly and its state-elected administrative offices. Whereas the city of Newton Falls is represented by Lyle Waddell and has served as a board member of the OML for the past five years. And whereas at a recent board meeting, Lyle Waddell was nominated and elected to the position of second vice president, and whereas beginning January 1st, 2020, Lyle Waddell was served as second vice president of the Ohio Municipal League. Council for the City of Newton Falls, State of Ohio hereby resolves. City of Newton Falls hereby congratulates Councilman Lyle Waddell on being elected to the position of second vice president of the Ohio Municipal League. I have a motion to accept this.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would have to say, I've had a chance to work with, uh, Lyle, Councilman Waddell, for the last several years. He has spent a lot of time in his own finance, uh, in going to the meetings, attending the meetings of the OML. And, uh, Lyle's always said it's important for the city of the village to have a presentation in Columbus and, uh, a representation, excuse me. And to be elected VP, VP of the OML is a big deal, man. It's a big deal, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Lyle, that you're the hardest working guy I've ever seen, and you've done a lot of good things and made a lot of good contacts and helped to move the city ahead, and I just want to thank you for all that you've done.
Appreciate that. I, I think it's important that the, uh, the Ohio Municipal League is, is, is exciting. It's, uh, it represents 751 municipalities and villages out of 937 in the state of Ohio. That's a very good representation. It's affiliated with the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association, the Mayor's Association of Ohio, the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ohio, the Ohio Association of Public Safety Directors, the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association, which our clerk was past president of, and the National League of Cities. And our current president, uh, our incoming president was also a member of the Ohio, uh, the National League of Cities. And our city manager was a past president of the Ohio Municipal League. What an honor that is. The, the thing that's interesting about the Ohio Municipal League as compared to other, uh, organizations that I belong to is there's a representation of the Ohio Municipal League of all of the state of Ohio. Uh, the others are not so much the, the state of Ohio wasn't completely representative. We don't have a representation on the AMP Board, the Ohio Municipal Electric Association, the American Public Power Association. We don't have a representative on there now because I am no longer the mayor and I stepped down and we lost our seats, and we didn't get them back. And, uh, but the Ohio Municipal League has 11 districts across the state of Ohio, and our district covers Lake Ashtabula, Geoga, Trumbull, Mahoning, Portage, Columbiana, and Carroll County. And, uh, Mayor, uh, Met, uh, Minkovich from Niles is the other representative from this district. And it's so important that, uh, you know, we have a voice in Columbus, and a lot of people say, well, that doesn't do a lot of good here. In fact, I asked the current president, what does the OML do for you and your community? And he says, you know, directly, it doesn't do a lot. He says, but indirectly, he says, our community has a voice, and we talk about the issues, and our people talk about the issues, and I take the issues back and we discuss them at the OML, and, and we discuss them at the State House. And that's what we do here. I bring information back from the OML, and we discuss it here, and I take the information back. It's a great organization, and I'm extremely, uh, honored to have been nominated and elected to the second vice presidency.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to be recognized?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, as a former president of the Ohio Municipal League, I observed back during those years of what the great import was of this organization and how it was perhaps the most important non-government influencer of state policy in the state of Ohio for municipalities. No organization protects local home rule more than the Ohio Municipal League, and of all the municipal leagues throughout the country, Ohio's is nationally recognized as one of the most powerful, most significant, and the one that has the most impact. Now, to be elected the second vice president, that means mayors and board members all over the state say that Lyle Waddell not only is deserted of this office and is a great reflection of the principles of the Ohio Municipal League, but it means they're saying, we think eventually he should be president of the Ohio Municipal League. Because when you're the second vice president, that means you are now in the queue to be the president of the Ohio Municipal League. Little old Newton Falls with the president, potentially, of the Ohio Municipal League. Uh, it's a feather in our cap, and don't think that the state legislature isn't paying more attention now to Newton Falls, because when they pay very serious attention to the Ohio Municipal League, they realize that one of the movers and shakers of the Municipal League is Lyle Waddell. Thanks for what you've done for our city tonight.
that I belong to is there's a representation of the Ohio Municipal League of all of the state of Ohio. The others are not so much the, the state of Ohio wasn't completely representative. We don't have a representation on the AMP Board, the Ohio Municipal Electric Association, the American Public Power Association. We don't have a representative on there now because I am no longer the mayor and I stepped down and we lost our seats and we didn't get them back. And, but the Ohio Municipal League has 11 districts across the state of Ohio, and our district covers Lake Ashtabula, Geoga, Trumbull, Mahoning, Portage, Columbia, and Carroll County. And Mayor Minkovich from Niles is the other representative from this district. And it's so important that, you know, we have a voice in Columbus. And a lot of people say, well, that doesn't do a lot of good here. In fact, I asked the current president, what does the OML do for you and your community? And he says, you know, directly, it doesn't do a lot. He says, but indirectly, he says, our community has a voice. And we talk about the issues and our people talk about the issues, and I take the issues back and we discuss them at the OML and we discuss them at the State House. And that's what we do here. I bring information back from the OML and we discuss it here and I take the information back. It's a great organization and I'm extremely honored to have been nominated and elected to the second Vice President seat.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to be direct?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As a former president of the Ohio Municipal League, I observed back during those years of what the great import was of this organization and how it was perhaps the most important non-government influencer of state policy in the state of Ohio for municipalities. No organization protects local home rule more than the Ohio Municipal League. And of all the municipal leagues throughout the country, Ohio's is nationally recognized as one of the most powerful, most significant, and the one that has the most impact. Now, to be elected the second Vice President, that means mayors and board members all over the state say that Lyle Waddell not only is deserted of this office and is a great reflection of the principles of the Ohio Municipal League, but means they're saying, we think eventually he should be President of the Ohio Municipal League. Because when you're the second Vice President, that means you are now in the queue to be the President of the Ohio Municipal League. Little old Newton Falls with the President potentially of the Ohio Municipal League. It's a feather in our cap, and don't think that the state legislature isn't paying more attention now to Newton Falls. Because when they pay very serious attention to the Ohio Municipal League, they realize that one of the movers and shakers of the Municipal League is Lyle Waddell. Thanks for what you've done for our city tonight.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Waddell. Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Barriac.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
See what you started, right?
I see.
How did you do?
Was it easy? Just the last one.
I think so, sir.
Hey, last but not least.
Take my time.
What's the number on this one?
61.
61.
61. Of a resolution of appreciation to Philip Beer for his years of service to the City of Newton Falls. Do I have a motion to put that on the floor?
It's already on the floor.
Second.
Discussion? Oh, wait a minute, I got to read it first. This one. A resolution of appreciation to Philip Beer for his years of service to the City of Newton Falls. Whereas Philip Beer was elected to position New City of Newton Falls City Council on January 1, 2012, and whereas he's served on council for the past eight years, and whereas he has demonstrated his dedication, interest in the community by his commitment to improving the quality of life of its residents, and whereas his devotion to the city has been expressed by his actions and participation in numerous community events during his service on council. And whereas in addition to serving as councilperson, he was also representative of council on many committees, including but not limited to, A, Planning and Zoning, Park and Recs, Joint Fire Board, Civil Service, Public Service, and many volunteer organizations. Whereas through the years Mr. Beer served, he took his duties as council representative consciously and sought out and gained knowledge of the City of Newton Falls Charter. His diligence and dedication to the city has been sincerely appreciated by the city residents. His knowledge acclimated throughout, accumulate, excuse me, throughout the years will be greatly missed by the city residents and his peers. Counsel for the City of Newton Falls, State of Ohio hereby resolved. Special recognition and appreciation is hereby given to Philip Beer for his eight years of service to the City of Newton Falls and the City of, the Newton Falls Council and city residents by way of this resolution, wish to express sincere appreciation to Philip Beer for his service to the community and wish him the best in the future. Discussion?
Yes. Phil, I just wanted to, you know, thank you for all your years of service and especially as a past member of the Planning, Zoning Board for all your years that I was on that board and bringing everything to council and getting all that stuff fast. That was greatly appreciated.
And I think the same thing. You've served on a number of committees, and you've brought good information back and you've been able to answer the questions, and you've worked hard, especially at planning. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work over there to do the things that you guys have done, and you've had good help on planning, zoning. But out of all the committees that we have, I think that's the one that takes a lot of time and effort and work to do, and you've done a great job with that. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, buddy. You survived eight years on Newton Falls. You're a survivor. I commend you. Also, Phil, if you don't read Facebook, if you didn't read, Phil's like this major historian. He knows everything from the book of Genesis till even now as far as the wars going on and stuff. And I read all of his postings every day when he posts stuff on there. And you just have like, you're going to be a professor to college or what are you going to do, huh? Anyway, congratulations, buddy.
Thank you very much. Well, I'd just like to say thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve the city. And, you know, it's not an easy job up here, and sometimes people, you know, are upset with you, and sometimes they like what you do, but, you know, you just have to hang in there and do the best that you can. And so, thank you for giving me the chance to serve you.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, as you know, my arrival as city manager here was fraught with some controversy and disagreements and so forth. But Councilman Beer, after the smoke had cleared, was one of the first people to say, look, regardless of that process, we want this community to succeed. And that means by helping the city manager to succeed, extended his hand, shook my hand, and helped this community move forward. Phil and I got to know each other a little bit better when we both attended the Eastern Gateway Community College event regarding the job training. And let me tell you, folks, he knows the city, his heart is with the community. Something tells me we haven't seen the last of Phil Beer. Congratulations for outstanding public service.
All I'd like to say, Phil, is I wish you the best. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Beer.
Upstain.
Alberini.
Yes.
Barriac.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
We're in the public comments section. We go back to where we started, public comments on items on the agenda.
We're going to go back to public comments. Those are limited to items on the agenda. Would anybody like to speak on the agenda? Most of it, it's been resolutions. We do have reappropriation in the, go ahead, please.
Mark Stempert, 1023 Page Court. Could you speak up a little bit, sir? Yeah, 1023 Page Court. My name is Mark Stempert. As a previous councilman, I just wanted to congratulate Phil Beer and Mr. Lyle Waddell, Terry Alberini, and John for previously. I just wanted to get up and say congratulations to all you because I didn't want to interrupt during the other conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, it was a pleasure working with you. Anyone else would like to speak on, I want to just?
There were still public comments, five.
Okay. I'm going to, excuse me then, I'm going to rule that closed. We're going to go on reports. I attended the, well, right now I'm at a blank where I would have attended, but whatever it was, I was there. Breakfast, I've been to so many breakfasts and I've really had a great time supporting the community. I'm going to miss this job. I should have ran. But no, that's not me. Councilmembers, please, Mr. Savet. Any other comments, please? Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, I attended the planning, zoning meeting. Mr. Beer said he wasn't sure if he was going to say much there. I got to come into county. They came in and did a presentation on their GIS system through the training classes I've been taking down at Ohio University. They've done a lot of demonstrations on the GIS systems. And I have to applaud the county planning commission. They're, for a small fee, giving the city and Mark Stempert access to a GIS system that is really going to benefit not only planning and zoning, but the Mark's department over there and the zoning department. And it's going to help our economic development team tremendously. There's a lot of things we can do with that. So, I really applaud the county for stepping up and giving us access to that because I don't think we could at this point in time afford a full-blown program. Mr. Axiotis there, I think he's going to be extremely helpful with that program. So, I'm kind of looking forward to see where that goes and how we can utilize that information. A little over a week ago, I did attend the OML meeting in Columbus. The high point was, again, we got to meet with Governor DeWine. And the governor opposes House Bill 242, which is the single-use bag tax. And he and the OML feels that's a direct assault on home rule.
Mr. Waddell? Is this in your committee reports, Economic Development?
Yes.
Which committee are you speaking on?
All of them. Economic Development, all of them.
Is, are you representative to more than Economic Development?
Yeah. Well, I do a pretty few of them there, John.
Oh, I didn't know you were representative. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, if you, committee reports, sir.
Yeah, committee reports, yes, Economic Development, John.
All right. Okay. Well, all of the committee reports, sir.
Yep. The, so we, he's against the bag tax, and that's against the home rule. I did talk about Strong Ohio, which is the gun bill that he's trying to do, and the prevention proposal. He's also talking about the opioid settlement for the money that's, you know, going to come out of the settlements, how it's going to be spent. There's so many different things, and that's what he's been talking about. Kent Garrett, our executive director, went to the governor's mansion, as I told you back in November, to talk about this. That's the first time that the OML sent someone to the governor's mansion. So, we do have that representation. And I did talk to him about restoring the local government tax, and he keeps hearing that all the time, but he says the legislature just doesn't seem to want to entertain that right now. So, we have to keep pushing forward on that. David and I went to the Port Authority meeting last week. We had a good time down there. And I had the opportunity to meet last week with Dr. Johanna Ganning. She's the Assistant Professor at Cleveland State University, the Maxine Goodman Levin College of Urban Affairs at Cleveland State University. She has a Bachelor's of Science degree in environmental research and management, Master's degree in urban regional planning, a PhD in regional planning. It's quite a, quite a, you know, quite a list of things there. And she is really, really excited about the Mahoney River Corridor, Mayor Association's River, Mahoney River Project. And she has taken that project of her own, and they have met individually with other members of the association and talked to us about how we feel about the project, how we feel that, you know, how the dams are going to affect the river, how we feel about the bike paths along the river, how the river will bring economic development. And I told her that, you know, we haven't talked much about our dam yet because we're still waiting for a study to determine how the, you know, gravity-fed water intake is going to happen. But it was, it was really nice for her to come down and talk. We talked about an hour and 15 minutes. And they're going to do a report and publish a report in a magazine about the river and about all the projects and the dams. And the only dam that is not controlled by a municipality or is the Levisburg Dam, which is controlled by the Metro Parks. And she was interested, she thought all the dams were controlled by a community. She didn't realize that the Levisburg Dam was controlled by the Metro Parks. And she asked how that was going to go, and I told her I went to that meeting in Levisburg, and it was just exciting in itself. But she is really, really excited that you have all the mayors in that association working together for a common goal. And as you realize, we were awarded a project from, an award from Youngstown State University, or, yeah, Cleveland State University by working together. And it's just something that you don't see. There's a lot of organizations that have mayors in it, but they don't work together like this association does. So, it was, it was a really nice meeting. It was nice to sit down and talk to her about the river and how that we are, what we're trying to do here and how our economic development team is looking at our river and looking at the development along the river. That's all for me.
Mr. Beer?
Yes, I'd just like to say, adding about the zoning, I asked Lyle to go ahead and steal my thunder because I think he understands it better than I do, but this new GPS system is going to give us great capabilities to map the city with the utilities, with the statistics. Anybody that wants to look at our city and think about, you know, possibly locating here, they'll have everything right at their fingertips. You know, the problem today, the old way of doing things, you'd print up something and almost as soon as you were done printing it, it was outdated. And that still could be the case with this computer system, but it'll be a lot better than the way we did things in the past. And it's hard for us to realize that, you know, the 21st century, things are changing tremendously, and this is a great tool for our zoning, for everything in this city, for our businesses to, you know, to let people know what Newton Falls is. And, you know, like, we could print up a brochure, but not near as many people would have access to it. And so, that's all I have to say, but it's exciting.
Mr. Barak, I have nothing.
We have a, right now currently, but we have a economic luncheon coming up with the members of the Chamber of Commerce this Wednesday.
I'd like to go then to the Finance Director.
I have nothing to report tonight.
I'd like to go to the Law Director next.
Nothing to report, but available for questions, gentlemen.
We'll wait until we get into the meeting. I have a couple that I'll wait to. And the City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the Ohio Public Works Commission has pretty much, for the most part, completed, I would say, about 75% of its evaluations. The City of Newton Falls in the last 24 years only one time has received funding for two projects. That was 24 years ago. We now are above the current line for funding to receive two projects. Quite remarkable. That is the project for the work that has to be done on the sewer system. In addition to that, there's a project for the, that's the Melody Street project. The second one is the loan for First Street for Mill and Phil. And think about that. City of Newton Falls getting two projects from the Ohio Public Works Commission. But as George M. Cohen used to say, you ain't seen nothing yet because the Small Governments Committee down in Columbus has us very close to positive evaluation for a third project. That has never happened in the history of Newton Falls. State grants coming from this agency. It's a tribute to these council people that work so hard and diligently to make sure the projects are notified here in the administration. It's a tribute to our own engineers, Thomas Folken Associates. It's a tribute to the hard work in keeping people informed from the County Engineers' Office, who's well represented today by the County Engineer, Randy Smith. And we're holding our breath so we can pop that cork of champagne sometime in early 2020 if we actually get that third project, which would be history-making. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report this evening.
Okay. Are there any changes? I'll rule that closed, and then it changes to tonight's agenda, folks. Okay, then we'll go on with the approval of the previous minutes. I have a motion to approve the previous minutes.
Submove.
Roll call.
Alberini.
Yes.
Barriac.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Have no public hearings tonight? There's nothing unfinished business? We'll go straight into new business then? Would the clerk please read by title, ordinance 2026, reappropriation?
An ordinance making appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Newton Falls, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019, and authorizing the Finance Director to amend and file a certificate of resources to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. for the next two weeks. So obviously, the grand total revenue was 2.5 million. We're only spending 2.49. We're not spending all of it, but we increased all the appropriations to guarantee that we don't have to have another meeting at the end of the year.
When you look at this kind of budget and this kind of money, it's really kind of hard to look through this and compare things when you get your budget right at the beginning of a meeting. I mean, it's just, it's just almost impossible to sit down and look at this and compare it and come up with...
The comparison you want to look at is the area in pink, which is FY appropriations for the amendment. So the last amendment was at 2.2 million, and now it's going to be at 2.4.
Well, I guess that was my question. What is that $290,000 appropriation change? Like, where does that fall in city administration, council, municipal court?
It falls, okay, it...
Like, the significant ones, the, like, little ones?
The significant ones would be the transfers going into the street fund and park fund. Major ones would be our building and maintenance. We have some projects in there. Major difference would be council other operations and police department other operations. And also the Finance Department, we had other operations. We, in the original budget, we had not anticipated doing the CAFR, but it was a good cost to do that, and as well as the audit costs were increased. So there was increase in the finance budget dealing with our audit.
Okay, so let's say council other operations. What is included in that additional appropriation?
I believe from the last amendment, the other operations was approximately $55,000 to $60,000. And it's now been increased to $165,000.
Okay, I understand that, but what I'm asking is, what specifically caused the appropriation to increase that significantly?
Additional contracts.
For? Like, I want to try to be some specificity here.
For the TV program, according to the council meetings, a lot of community programs that were involved in the year, such as the Fourth of July Parade, the lot of different community events that you guys have...
What line item is that?
What's that?
What is that?
That's...
That's in general...
General fund, and that would be council other operations.
I don't have that. I don't have that.
Yeah.
I had it. I looked at it before I came in.
And our revenue stream has increased, what, 6% this year?
8%.
8%?
And the income tax.
And dollar amount would be 8% equals how much in revenue, roughly?
About...
You're not calling somebody, are you?
No, I'm using my calculator.
About $160,000?
I was going to say about, yes. Over $100,000, definitely.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman, can I be recognized, please?
I wanted to, go ahead, but I want to ask Anna a question.
I'll defer our yield to the chairman.
Anna, the council, has that been increased by, and how, by how much?
As I stated before, the increase was from, basically going from $55,000 to $165,000 in other operations.
Why?
Additional contracts, serving the community, doing the Fourth of July Parade, your annexation, economic development, stuff like that, that you guys are promoting in the community and doing what's needed for our community.
Mr. Truman?
Yes, Cor. Yeah. Madam Finance Director, this appropriation is now in order that we can comport with the auditor's requirement, and that's why we need to pass this tonight. But this represents, and you've represented this council before, a significant carryover. Is that correct?
Correct.
Could you let the council know the dollar amount that you're anticipating carrying over?
For the general fund, we're anticipating approximately half a million dollars, or it could be more. We just don't know. We're two weeks out, but right now, if I close the books out, it is looking like the carryover for the general fund will be over half a million as of right now.
What was the last one?
Last year, it was $631,320.
Okay. I think we'll be close to that also.
We'll be probably close to that or above that.
We'll be very close to that or higher than that. We're estimating $500,000 right now, Mr. Chairman, but I anticipate that we'll be north of $600,000 on our carryover.
Mr. Monson?
As far as what are the parks and that, is that going to be a significant change?
So if you look at the appropriations, the last amendment for parks, which is Fund 204, which is special revenue fund.
Yes.
So we went from $135,000 to $232,000, but that's due to additional work that we did at the park fencing. It was one of the projects with the baseball field where we contributed $50,000. And there's labor costs for moving the park and stuff like that. So...
But is there, from what I'm, what I'm trying to ask is this. Are we asking for more for economic development and annexation and that?
No.
Than we usually ask?
No, we typically do these expenses at the end of the year. We always, you can spend exactly what's in the total available estimated resources. So technically, I could take the general fund to 2.505,700, but I always make it down just a little bit less. What it is, is you cannot spend more than your actual total available resources, which is your beginning balance minus the prior year encumbrances, plus how much revenue we're going to receive, minus the expenses. So this is just an appropriation ordinance to be compliance with Ohio Vice Code and our charter that we're balanced, that we're not spending more than we're bringing in. This is an estimate, gentlemen, because, again, we're two weeks out. This is not the actual numbers. The numbers could be actually closer to 1.998, okay? But we have to just appropriate in case something does majorly happen in the next two weeks with major snowstorm or something like that. So this is an estimate.
Our goal is not to bring you back again for another meeting before the crystal ball at Times Square is descending.
I thank you for that. But I would also ask if we can, is there a reason we don't do reappropriations throughout the year?
We actually have done some, I think.
Yes, we typically do. Typically, as you want to budget very close to what you normally have, and actually, the number of amendments is a sign of weakness with the CAFR and points from a financial standpoint, and when we get our AMP Ohio credit scores. So, yes, you can amend it as many times as you want, but you want to show that your estimate's good and that you know how to project your revenue and expenses.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on that matter, please? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Savet, he and I have talked about this a few times, and if you detect a little bit of divergence of opinion on philosophy as to how to do this, this Councilman Savet and I have talked about the fact that your budget, or rather, your appropriation as a reflection of your budgetary goals can and should change along the way. If this council sometime in April should decide, "We need to focus on doing something extra for the parks that requires a budget change," and therefore, an appropriation change. And so I have never viewed the living, breathing, making adjustments, the same way a football coach does, depending on how the way the game is going throughout the year, making those amendments. And Councilman Savet and I have talked about the propriety of doing that. The best people in government are ones that know how to react to things and change the game plan along the way, as long as you're finishing significantly in the black, which we are. Our Finance Director, on the other hand, has reflected the idea that when you have these continuous amendments, that is a sign of management weakness. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I understand the nature of that philosophy as well, in trying to make sure we do an appropriation now and not try to wait until 11:59 on the 31st in order that we can prove to the auditors that everything finished to the exact penny. Her way of making sure there's an appropriation now, which will get us through the end of the year without there being other issues, is acceptable and makes some sense as well. And you'll continue to see this sort of philosophical difference play itself out, but I'd have to say I find myself coming down on the Savet side of the ledger with reference to reacting to things along the way, instead of waiting until a longer period of time goes by and we have a consolidated view of doing things. There will be a form of recapitulation in 2020, as we look back at things as well. So I'd have to say, I appreciate the conservatism of our Finance Director, and I'll continue to endorse it despite the fact that I think we do need to be reactive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing that I'm, and if I'm wrong, don't judge me, but let's say we appropriate this money, and all of a sudden, something comes up, and we want to put an extra 15 or 20, or whatever it is, I don't know. You don't, he doesn't have to come back to council and say, "Hey, I want to go spend this money on buying tulips down there in Ziny, Ohio." He just says it was appropriated. Is that correct? I mean, do you understand the question I'm saying? Does this, do we know what we're, do we, how do I know if we're going to use this money and might be made aware without giving a blank check to somebody, the city manager, anybody?
Okay, so first of all, we have a finance committee that reviews the bank statements and the expense reports and what checks we cut. I send them emails on a regular basis. In addition, we have checks and balances on that, so that would not happen, because it would be a red flag. Typically, what we're dealing with right now for the last two weeks of the year is dealing with major payrolls and overtime, and most of the, we've already stopped, last week was our last check run for the year. Okay, so basically, the last two weeks, we're just dealing with payroll expenses and dealing with French taxes, and we're reconciling the W-2s. You have your PRS pension reports, you have your 941 tax report. There's a lot of year-end stuff that has to go in for the last two weeks. But the other all accounts payable checks, utilities and everything else, has been cut for the year. So what we're doing is just getting ready for the year-end, preventing you guys from coming back for another council meeting with actual final numbers. After the year closes, I will present the final numbers to you. But this is just overall a projection of expenses to cover the city in case something does happen in the next two weeks.
I understand what we're doing tonight. We've run into things before where there were large amounts of money spent, and the council didn't even know it was spent. And I don't want to get into that tonight, but I'm trying to put a check and balance in on that, too. And I think that after the first of the year, we're going to approach something where we might, we may put some legislation so at least we know where the money is going. You know, I know I might put a little bit of extra work on you, Anna, but I'm...
Okay.
I appreciate it. Any other discussions?
I'd just like to say, this budget, you're dealing with millions of dollars. It's not the easiest thing to understand, and some people are better at it than others. But what bothers me is we have been spending an awful lot of money. Now, maybe we have more money than what we've had in the past, but, you know, like, I would like to see the council more aware of where the money's being spent. For example, like the lights on the tower. You know, we didn't know where all that money was going until it was already spent, and a number of other things. But that doesn't mean that it's a bad thing. I mean, I'm just saying the people love it, okay? But there's a point where I just worry that, you know, we're going to spend down our money too far, you know, and I'd just like to see council made a little bit more aware of what's going on. We've got to spend money if we want to move ahead, but I'd just like to be a little bit more aware of it. I'm not going to be here anyway, but, you know.
No, but we...
I'll call you.
I just want to make one comment.
I might be sitting up here, but...
But from the...
Of course, you'll be made aware of it.
From the Finance Department, we send out emails to the Finance Committee, the bank statements, everything, every transaction, every check cut. So if there's any additional checks and balances want, that's up to you guys in council, but we, I do send that information out.
Would that be inappropriate if Anna sent that out to all council?
What exactly?
For the Finance Committee?
No, 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 no.
That'd be fine.
Is that what you're, you may want to do that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll represent that. I'll make sure she does that to all persons on the council now.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah. And I think that might clear up a lot of things that rest of the council wasn't aware of.
Or at least give us a little time to have questions.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think we can go back in session.
I was going to ask if anybody else would like to, do you want to run a meeting, Terry? Go ahead. I'll give you, it's Christmas. Is there any other discussion? I'd like to put a motion to reinstate the rules in. I have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Berriac.
Yes. Then I'll go ahead and put a motion on the floor to accept ordinance 201936 with a title.
We already have that.
Has she read it by title?
Yeah.
We don't have to vote on it?
We have to vote on it, but it's on the floor right now.
It's on the floor.
You can ask for discussion if they want to discuss with rules in place.
Does anybody have any more, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any more discussion on that before we, now that we've come back into session?
Do we need to amend for emergency, or is that...
I'd just like to say, this budget, you're dealing with millions of dollars. It's not the easiest thing to understand, and some people are better at it than others. But what bothers me is we have been spending an awful lot of money. Now, maybe we have more money than what we've had in the past, but you know, like, I would like to see the council more aware of where the money's being spent. For example, like the lights on the tower, you know, we didn't know where all that money was going until it was already spent, and a number of other things. But that doesn't mean that it's a bad thing, and I'm just saying the people love it, okay? But there's a point where I just worry that, you know, we're going to spend down our money too far, you know, and I'd just like to see council made a little bit more aware of what's going on. We've got to spend money if we want to move ahead, but I'd just like to be a little bit more aware of it. I'm not going to be here anyway, but you know.
No, but we.
I'll call you.
I just want to make one comment.
I might be sitting up here, but.
Sure. I'm sure she'll be made aware of it.
From the finance department, we send out emails to the finance committee, the bank statements, everything, every transaction, every check cut. So if there's any additional checks and balances want, that's up to you guys in council, but we, I do send that information out.
Would that be inappropriate if Anna sent that out to all council?
What exactly?
For the finance committee?
No, 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 no.
That'd be fine.
Is that what you're, you may want to do that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll represent that. I'll make sure she does that to all persons on the council now.
All right, yeah, thank you, yeah, yeah. And I think that might clear up a lot of things that rest of the council wasn't aware of.
Well, at least give us a little time to have questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Motion, we go back in session?
I was going to ask if anybody else would like to, do you want to run a meeting, Terry? Go ahead. I'll give you, it's Christmas. Is there any other discussion? I'd like to put a motion to reinstate the rules in. I have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Savette.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Baria.
Yes. Then I'll go ahead and put a motion on the floor to accept ordinance 2019-36 with a title.
We already have that.
She read it by title?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we don't have to vote on it?
We have to vote on it, but it's on the floor right now.
It's on the floor.
You can ask for discussion if they want to discuss with rules in place.
Does anybody have any more, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any more discussion on that before we, now that we've come back in the session?
Do we need to amend for emergency, or is that afterwards? Okay, sorry, sorry, thanks.
You can ask for a roll.
Roll call then.
Waddell.
Who?
She's calling a roll.
Waddell, did she say you? She did. Did you say yes? I haven't said anything yet. Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Baria.
Yes.
Savette.
Yes.
We're going to vote on it again?
Have it run a second time.
We're going to waive the, would you read it again, please?
An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Newton Falls, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019, and authorizing the finance director to amend and file a certificate of resources to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Does that move?
Second.
Roll call, I mean, discussion? Roll call.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Baria.
Yes.
Savette.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes. Okay, then we'll go to ordinance 2019-37, establishing a position and rate of pay. Would the clerk please read that by title?
An ordinance amending ordinance 2014-09, establishing pay rates and positions for employees of the city of Newton Falls, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Does that move?
Second.
Discussion?
What is the emergency in regards to this?
Can I address that, Mr. Chairman? The, this is the ordinance related to sprinkling holy water on the arrival, re-arrival of Linda Grunder. I would have to say to some extent that's, this ordinance probably could have been written in a more descriptive way because she's strictly been working with me on these utility issues, remember, during the summertime, and I made an announcement to this council, I think in August, that Linda Grunder was going to be coming back for a limited period of time, not a permanent position. Now, she's been very helpful, Councilman Beer, as relates to the many, many, myriad of meetings I've been having residence about the, about the issues of the utilities. Councilman Baria asked me about this a little bit earlier today because his question was, well, what do you need Linda Grunder on for still to deal with utilities if the citizen complaints have been dealt with directly? And as I mentioned in August, Linda Grunder's participation is not strictly in dealing with the citizen complaint issues, but with helping to redesign our bill, making sure it's more descriptive, and more importantly, perhaps most importantly, you know that I am in the grips of an epic battle with AMP right now. And she's communicating with Aaron Teeters, our consultant, on the rates, who's analyzing the AMP bills as well, and I'm expecting this to bear fruit. I'm expecting to bear the kind of fruit where we can reduce our electric rates even further, but we have to keep up the pressure. I need Linda to help me do that. She is the only person in City Hall that has a level of understanding of the technical nature of the bills and the way AMP is billing us, that we can effectively fight this battle. It's not a permanent position. She already took a retirement. My anticipation is we'd have around, maybe at the latest, through the end of May, but it's an epic battle, and despite some skepticism, I appreciate all of your support on this. We can win the battle with AMP, and this amount that we're paying Linda to be here is tiny compared to what's at stake with AMP. What's at stake with AMP is millions of dollars, and we can use that to the benefit of our constituents. Now, why is it an emergency? That's the question you asked. The law director and I have been talking about, well, how do we create the legal frameworks that we can move forward with having her do this? And this ordinance is a result, and I don't know, Mr. Law Director, I would be okay if it needed two readings, I suppose, but I don't know if, does it have to be passed before the year ends? And I think the finance director might have an answer to that.
This gentleman does need to be passed for the year-end for payroll purposes for the audit. If it's not passed by the end of the year, it is basically, could be.
An audit citation.
Audit citation.
Go ahead, Joe.
Can I address that? What? I just would like to know, I mean, Linda has a lot of experience, and I have confidence in her and everything else, but this is a temporary position?
Yes.
For as long as we need her, but once she leaves, there won't be somebody automatically filling that position without us having.
It is adios and the sun sets.
That's the concern we had. We want to make sure, we have specific positions created by charter, we have specific positions that this, this council has to pass. When we, we have the nature of temporary position here, it's just like a contract employee come in, like my contract is what, like Mr. Christopher Faro, she's a contract person. But in order to establish proper payroll, because she's working within the city confines, the auditor is going to require that it's there. So I, I tried to figure out what to do for about two or three weeks. Reasons for emergencies, because we need to get done this calendar year, and we had to make sure we're in a position where we know that she's not a permanent employee, she's a contracted employee, we're receiving a certain income, and that you're aware of what that, what it's going to be, based upon the assurances, it's a temporary position.
First of all, I'd like to have a, go ahead, go ahead, Zach, then I'm going to weigh in.
And I guess I'm confused because you used both descriptions, and I'm confused on which one we're actually doing now. You said contract employee, you said contract.
It's not a contract.
So it's just an employee then?
Correct.
Okay.
It's similar to us having a temp service coming in, where we have, without the contract between her and us, her position is being established by this ordinance.
Okay, so.
May I assist? When we, our city manager did bring this up to you guys in advance that we're hiring Linda, okay? So after we did that, we had to do some homework and research because we didn't want, in fact, impact Linda's retirement. So what the driving force behind all this research was the Ohio PERS and its rules and regulations. So we sat down with Opers, I put a phone call, and Joe and I did some research, and this was the best way to recommend this ordinance, was to make it sure it's clean with the auditors, it was in compliance with PERS, and then Linda could be hired for the city.
And that was honestly my thought process, because I've actually dealt with this a little bit in terms of that a person that has retired can't come back and do a contract with the city in her same position, she had to be rehired. Okay, that kind of clears it out for me, thanks.
I have a couple of questions for the law director.
Yes, sir.
Could we pass this tonight to pay her till December 31st and then revisit this, whether we want to rehire her in the next year, whether we want to put her on? Because I'll tell you what, here's what I have a problem with. First of all, this started up in October, and we should have been told it was going to be a snafu or something, or we were having discussions and that. This is a last minute thing again. Second of all, I understand and I have nothing personal against Mrs. Grunder, she does a fantastic job. But second of all, this is $25 an hour, how many hours a week?
It varies, it's anywhere between 25 and 39, somewhere in that area.
Do you believe she has more experience than you, Mr. Lynch, that you couldn't do this? I mean, that's what I want to know.
Yes.
Why does she have more experience?
Let's see, working in that department for 25 years?
She has more experience with AMP?
Yes.
And she, and what are we looking for with her to do in AMP? What are we, explain what projects you were wanting her to do. Could you do?
Executive session on that, if he wants that answer.
Yeah, I, I, I hesitate to get into the specifics of the battle with AMP. Anybody that's received that newsletter knows that we're unhappy with the fact that they have us in nine different contracts, in some of which we are paying rates which are substantially higher than some of the other communities that are in AMP. In addition to that, has us in contracts to the point where we are buying electricity more than we need and therefore has to be sold back to these communities. It's, it's unbelievably complicated, to be honest with you, Councilman, and very few people anywhere in the state of Ohio have the level of understanding that Linda Grunder has because of her experience in dealing with AMP over these years. Remember, we started with AMP, I think Councilman Waddell was back in the 1960s, we originally started dealing with AMP, and we've gotten ourselves deep into the weeds with AMP. My objective is, you know, we're going to extricate ourselves to the benefit of our citizens so we can reduce our rates. And I'm telling you right now, the most essential tool I have in that fight is Linda Grunder. Please don't take my armor away. Please, I understand. I'll take full responsibility of the fact that I announced this sometime in August, we brought her on, she was working fantastically for us, but the law director, after some consultation with him, threw a yellow flag and said, we need to, after the finance director identified issues and talking with the auditors, we need to do some kind of special ordinance. That's what's in front of you tonight. We usually get it right before we go ahead and involve something like this, but I'm telling you, the AMP issue is one of urgency. It's one of urgency.
May I?
Go ahead, sir.
Like to answer the question that you had asked?
Yes, that's what I.
The majority of this council could direct the city manager, you could pass this tonight, the majority of council that comes in 2020, you can direct him to suspend, to tell her time's up. So they, you can remove, you can direct him to remove her because she's a temporary employee. So by, by majority of council, you're directing to do that. So to answer your question, you can pass this, and then during next session, a majority of council, if they wish, to tell them that they no longer want her there.
Mr. Fritz. Look, I don't have any problem tonight, this is my, this is my rule. I don't have any problem helping us to clarify the books, to close the books out. With a new council coming on, can I put a motion on that we just let her run to the beginning of the year and then let the new council determine whether, by a vote, whether we want to bring her in as a temporary employee? And here's, and the other question I have, when we made it, when we made this, I know you're going to say it's not a position, it's temporary, and I've never looked in the charter, if you have the charter here right now, where we have an assistant city manager, is that in the charter?
It's not a title of assistant city manager.
Well, you called her assistant city manager.
As I mentioned at the beginning of my dialogue with this body, indicated that assistant to the manager for the purposes of the utilities activities. I guess what I'm saying to this council is this, if you were to do something such as your suggestion, that means I have to go back to Linda Grunder and renegotiate the relationship. Linda Grunder didn't have to come back and help me with this. In fact, she was hesitant. She was reluctant. It was difficult, and the last thing I want to do is to endanger what is now our precarious, delicate relationship with AMP in these negotiations. As I indicated to you, I don't anticipate her being on board past the springtime, and it's of some urgency, and I would ask your indulgence this evening.
Mr. Alberini?
So some of these contracts, as you had spoken about previously, like these hydro contracts and things like that, that the city has gotten themselves into over the years pertaining, I remember, I remember you talking about these hydro contracts, some of the rivers dried up, but we're still invested in buying power from dried up hydro plants, which doesn't make sense. So basically, what we're doing, we're investing upfront with Linda's time and effort to do the research and her due diligence, so we can capture that money downstream when this is all said and done.
Not only capture it downstream, Councilman Alberini, but see if we can find ways to extricate ourselves.
Which I agree with 100%.
And by the way, it's, it's not easy. Councilman Waddell probably has the greatest familiarity with some of these contractual issues, having had experience with another electric provider, but this is not going to be as easy and probably involve some dissertations from the law director as to our contractual relationships, but if you're going to succeed, you better have, you better damn well have, a strong financial factual basis, and the research she's doing is of that nature, and I ought not to be more specific than that, Mr. Chairman.
So ultimately, the goal of this is to get out from these, these contracts that are underwater, so to speak.
Yep.
That we've, that we've gotten stuck with over the years.
I hesitate to use the word, get out of the contracts.
Extricate, extricate.
Potentially renegotiate.
We hold the fire department.
Renegotiate the terms to the benefit of both parties.
I'm not a lawyer.
We'd like to renegotiate terms to the benefit of both parties.
Understand.
Anything more, we should talk in executive session.
Got you.
Go ahead.
Just to kind of maybe elaborate and answer on Mr. Baria's questions, when, when Mr. Lynch came to me originally about the AMP situation, he came to me because of my affiliation with AMP and my affiliation with the electric industry, and to be honest with you, he didn't have a lot of knowledge about that. And, and that's fine, I mean, we don't all know everything. He's come a long way, I can tell you that, he's come a real long way. And we've had some really interesting discussions, we've sat down and looked at contracts, we've looked at information, we've met with AMP, we've had a lot of tremendous, good discussions. But when you get down into the weeds, it's hard for me now, because I'm retired, to get into the billing part of it and get all those things, and there is a complete difference between the billings and a, you know, and AMP and a, you know, the other utilities. There's, Linda's got just an absolutely tremendous amount of knowledge, and when we decided to, when he decided to meet with Aaron Teeters and, and do this information with Aaron Teeters, Aaron took the time to give me a call, and because of the information that Linda had, it was really easy to sit down with Aaron Teeters and carry on a very intelligent conversation, which led to some very good discussion here, and also led with the city manager to carry on more discussion, which leaves us where we are today. Linda's a wealth of information, and when you have all the inside information on the billing, how the billing's done, how AMP does their billing, how it's all spread out, there isn't anybody here that knows that information, and I don't care who you are or what you do, Anna has a good bit of knowledge there, she's been very helpful with us on that, but Anna also doesn't have that knowledge at all. And if we're going to sit here and talk about looking at doing something, you know, beneficial to the citizens, we need all the tools that we can get, and right now, that's a tool. And you want to open that toolbox up and use all the tools you have, and we've got a tool.
I have a second address.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Beer.
Okay, I'd just like to say that, you know, my, my big concerns are just the fact that hiring on new positions and so on, do we have the money to do this? But if it's going to be for the benefit of the city, I don't think we can get a better person than Linda to come back and, and work, and she has a good rapport with everybody that she works with, and she has a lot of knowledge, and I think it might really help the girls that are there, not speaking bad against them, but I think they're relatively new to this game. Linda knows a lot of things, and I think she could maybe pass on some of that knowledge to, you know, to them and maybe help the whole operation run smoother, and then again, if it'll help reduce the rates, I'm willing to give it a chance.
What I'd like to say is that it, all I'm going by, and I'm not trying to be facetious or trying to be argumentative, I was told that Mrs. Grunder was brought back to help the tidal wave of people complaining about their electric bills, and no one knows more about her than that. I was not let in on about, till a day ago, until I saw this come in my packet, that we're going to have her work on AMP contracts. Now, I'm going to have to have two, two things from the floor tonight. Number one, I'm going to have, ask Mr. Lynch, are you going to stand by this, that this is going, that this job is going to, temporary position is going to be done in May?
I guess I'll approach it this way, I don't anticipate would go past May. If the AMP contracts become more complicated, I'll stand by, I'll come back to this council and ask for renewal beyond May. Fair enough?
Okay, and number two, Mr. Fritz, are we going to get into another, people wanting civil service tests and wanting to apply for this temporary position? Are we, are we in any threat, I'd like that on the floor, put publicly on the floor, that we're, we're in perfectly legal waters? Because to me, the last time we went through this, we weren't creating a position, and we, now we're creating a position. I don't want to get into administrative. All I want to know is what we're doing. Can you please answer that question, sir?
To answer your question.
That's your ability.
To answer your question, there's always potential for a nuisance lawsuit. I don't have the crystal ball, I can't prove it, but I'm suggesting that council passing this is the best thing to get to the resolution we want, and there's always that possibility, but I'm able to defend it. To answer your question, there's always potential for a nuisance lawsuit, I don't have the crystal ball, I can't prove it, but I'm suggesting that council passing this is the best thing to get to the resolution we want, and there's always that possibility, but I'm able to defend it.
Mr. Chairman, you call a question?
Am I on the vote to call a question then? There's been a motion put on the floor to call a question.
A second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sebette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
This is motion call a question. End of the conversation, now they vote.
Now, I'm going to motion on, put a motion on the floor, well, the motion's on the floor.
It's on the floor.
You're right, it's time to roll.
Call a roll on the position.
Bariak?
No.
Sebette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need to read it again, because?
We have to read it again because it's emergency.
An ordinance, amending ordinance 2014-09, establishing pay rates and positions for the employees of the city of Newton Falls, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Sub move.
Second. Roll call.
Sebette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
No. Okay, we have a motion to accept the finance director.
No, 57.
Fifty-five.
Wait a minute.
Fifty-five.
Thank you, 55, number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion, resolution 55-2019, will the clerk please read that by title?
A resolution, amending resolution 53-2009, authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts for the purchase of chemicals for the city of Newton Falls for the fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Discussion.
I can look at the table from the last one, was that not on there? Was it left off, or I would just, I just wanted to have a quick explanation.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on this? Yeah, the city clerk very ably serves also as the processor and tabulator for the bids as they come in, and while she normally acts merely as the clerk for these meetings, she can very briefly explain what that, what that issue was to Councilman Sebette, it's a very simple explanation.
It is simple. Bonded Chemicals had bid, and it was on a second sheet, that bid was on there, which we inadvertently missed when we opened and read the bids, so after we awarded them last year, last week, Bonded called and said, "Hey, what about my bid?" And they were, they were at a lower amount at $24.40 per hundred, when, yes, last week's we approved $25.10.
Okay, all right, I saw that, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Waddell?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sebette?
Yes.
We'll go to resolution 57-2019, the clerk please read that by title.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a contract with Assured Partners for consulting services for employee benefits.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion.
This is for the insurance?
Yes.
Like to have the city manager weigh in on this.
Yeah, this is the consultant with reference to the health insurance benefits, I discussed this several weeks ago, this is being brought to fruition tonight.
Have the employees all sat down with you, sir, and discussed these benefits?
Yes, they have.
Like we had a committee before?
Not in committee form, but yes, they have.
And everybody seems to know what's going on?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I would describe the mood as pleasantly surprised and happy.
Is this for the provider, or is this for a consultant to get the provider?
Correct, that's, and that's what I described to a few weeks ago.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Here.
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sebette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
We have to go to?
I think it's 13.
Or 12.
12, 12. I have a motion to accept the finance director's November report, attachment is submitted?
Sub move.
We didn't do that, did we?
No.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Discussion?
I didn't see an overtime or comp report, could I get one?
Yes, you can get one.
Thank you.
And then just one other thing, has our state audit been released by state?
Yes, it has.
Yes, oh yeah.
Okay, so I'm able to discuss that, correct?
Sure, it's online right now.
Well, okay, because I think before they release it, you can't actually.
Yeah, that's true, I think that's.
It's been released.
Okay, the items within that report that we were, they notified us on?
Sure.
Can we get a, that those things have been resolved?
Yes.
All three items have been resolved, and they're done.
Okay, thank you, because I know one of those was.
Well, actually, you resolved one of them tonight with your reappropriation.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion, sir? Mr. Beer or Mr. Waddell, anybody want to play in? Mr. Alberini?
I do.
Roll, please.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sebette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Last thing on the agenda is we have a motion to appoint Brian Axiotis to the Planning and Zoning Committee Commission.
Sub move.
Discussion, is Mr. Axiotis here? There he is.
Do you want it?
Come on up.
Happy to be here for two hours, right?
I can't see what these cheers.
I think he brings a lot to the meetings, I've been very impressed sitting at the meetings and listened to him discuss the items, and know when we went to, well, I didn't go to Wadsworth, but when we went down, help me out.
Farallon.
Farallon, thank you, why could I forget that?
The fiber tour.
Yeah, the fiber tour, I mean, it's just nice to have some people on the committees that have knowledge and strength in some of the areas we're working in, and appreciate that.
Brian, do you still open my ward? I'm not going to say.
I do.
Well, good to have somebody down with me.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on this?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the other things Mr. Axiotis brings to the table, everybody should be aware of, is that, as I indicated, in the middle of this past year, 2020 is my target year for fulfillment of the expansion of fiberization in our community, and I discussed this briefly with Mr. Axiotis last week, and it may be that due to his expertise, that it may be the kind of issue which is run through the Planning and Zoning Commission by virtue of the fact that obviously involves a lot of planning and expansion of activities throughout the community, so Mr. Axiotis, Axiotis will, to some extent, be wearing a couple of hats as he dons the uniform of the, of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's not too often you get a, somebody as a membership of that board who has expertise in this area as well, so I hope you will embrace his participation on a unanimous basis. Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
I haven't voted yet, but congratulations. We need to vote. Excuse me.
I'd just like to say. Brian, you have a lot of expertise, and I think that you'll be a great benefit to the commission, and I think he is a guy that will stand firm for what he believes, I think he's proved that, and he's, you know, he's, that's the kind of guy you want to be in those positions, and I think at some point, I believe John is going to be termed out, maybe you might think about running.
Might get it sooner.
Thank you, guys.
Brian, I'm sure you'll do a great job. Welcome to, I'd like, just like to say on my own personal, it's very hard to get people to step up, as Mr. Lynch has said in the past, and I have to cold-heartedly agree, it's one that's always on a, pushing somebody else in to do the fighting. When you get into the ring, you got to put your own hands up, it's a whole different story, so I appreciate you stepping up to serve this community, sir.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sebette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
We'll go to public comments then, anyone wishing to address city council? I'm going to rule that closed. Mr. Sebette?
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays, and be nice once the new councilwoman and the mayor come on board, and hopefully we have a fruitful 2020.
Mr. Waddell, do you have any comments?
Yeah, again, happy new, I hope everybody has a good Christmas and a happy new year. I think everybody realizes that economic development is at the forefront of what I believe we need to do here, and going to continue to work on that for next year, we still have quite a few things in the pipeline, we want to see those things develop. The electric rates are extremely important, and I think that we're going to continue to work, and we're going to see some results. You stole some of my thunder there, I have it written down for high-speed internet, I mean, that's, that's really important, and I, it's not only important here, it's important in the valley, and the Mayor Association is working on that, Mayor Dusiani is working at it locally down there, you know, we have maybe some connections through the Turnpike Commission and CSX where rail, I mean, where high-speed fiber is available, and, you know, you can only get so many irons in the fire and do so many things, but, you know, we need to look at this cable TV stuff, you know, Wadsworth has their own cable TV, other communities have their own cable TV, it's something we may just, just start to look into, maybe explore, maybe it's something that we can get headed that way, and see what is involved in the cost, and, you know, how we could, you know, sell it to our customers and, and maybe be more competitive than we are now. A lot of people are out there doing away with the current providers and going to different things, and I know I've kicked it around and looked at it, and I need a class on how to do that, so maybe we could get somebody to show us, but I think it's something we really do, need to look at, is how we could provide better, more reliable services, if we, if we could provide anything close to the reliability of our electric department, we'd be so far ahead of everybody else, we wouldn't know what to do, but I think those are things that we could look at and, and make this community something for people to really look at.
Well, I'd just like to say again, thank you very much for letting me serve the city. When you set up here, you can't have everybody liking you all the time, but you do the best that you can, and, you know, you stand firm on the things that you believe in, and other than that, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy new year, a merry Christmas, and good holiday season. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Who's next? Finance director?
I just want to wish our residents and all members of council and administration and employees a very merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Would the clerk like to say anything tonight?
Yeah, thank you.
Would the law director like to say anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Lynch?
Just briefly, to the council, thank you for your review of all these financial matters. I know Councilman Beer is right, these are complex matters, but just to show you the kind of faith you can have in your finance director, tonight, before the swearing-in was taking place with Councilman Bariak, and congratulations again to Councilman Braymire, the judge came up to me and said, "Well, we're going to do the swearing-in, does anybody have a Bible? Does anybody have a Bible?" And we went from person to person who has a Bible. Our finance director had a Bible, that'll tell you something. The Parks and Recreation Commission is short one member, and we just talked about people stepping up and how difficult it is, and thank Brian Axiotis for his participation. We now need a Parks and Recreation member, and we need a member of the Civil Service Commission, because Councilwoman Braymire is ascending to the lofty post of being a councilwoman, so please, ladies and gentlemen, we need your help and your participation, so don't sit out in the bleachers and watch the game, get onto the field, because we really do need your help. Tomorrow night, the high school and junior high are having their Christmas concert for the band and for the choir, and Channel 1023, Newton Falls Television, if you can't make it in person, is broadcasting that live tomorrow night, so go out there and watch the kids live over, it's at the high school auditorium, I believe, but get over there and watch it, but if you can't, watch it on YouTube or Newton Falls Television or Spectrum Channel 1023, and I don't know, this is going to throw everybody in the control booth crazy there, but I don't know whether it's Steve's camera or Amy's camera that can whip around to the back of the room, because our new mayor, Ken Klein, is sitting in the back of the gallery there, and Mayor Klein is going to be installed as our new mayor on the date of January 1, and that is at the Church of God, followed by a brunch, and to make history here in Newton Falls, our new mayor will be given the oath of office by the Chief Justice of the Ohio Supreme Court. I encourage everybody to get over there, that is a venue which has all the multimedia devices that we need to do this properly, and also has the seating that we lack in this room, so please do join us for this exciting turning of the page. Congratulations to Mayor Klein, and we look forward to your administration. And, Mr. Chairman, that brings to conclusion my remarks.
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to finish up tonight with, I'd personally like to thank all the businesses and people who went out of their way to make the December 1 lighting ceremony a total success. Like I say, it's been the talk of the town. One other thing I want to bring up, I don't know if anybody watches Facebook, somebody caught a 38 and a half inch muskie down at Commerce Park, I mean, the first street park, so, you know, it's, and we're working on that, I know the mayor's working on that, Mr. Lynch is working on that, hopefully we'll get more good news, but that's just great, because I, I knew there were some big muskies in there. Also, on a personal note, I would like to thank Mrs. Braymire, your future fourth ward councilman, she's very humble, and I'll probably get beat up, but she was the one that made all the Charlie Brown decorations, added no charge to the city, and I'll tell you, as hard as that lady worked on those decorations, if she takes that to heart like she will to the council job, the community is going to be very well served. Without, with that, no more being said, I'd like to wish everybody a merry Christmas, and thank you for supporting me, and, and thank you for your input in that, for who you've elected in that, on everybody, and I hope we can all work together next year and, and get along and try to work towards a moving forward. With that, I wish everybody a merry Christmas. I want to make a motion then, if there's no one else, would anybody like to redress or anything else you might have thought of?
Motion to adjourn.
Like to make a motion to, go ahead.
I was making a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Good. Roll call, please.
Sebette?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Yes.